Let's call to order the special work session, not special work session, but a regular work session for Thursday, February 20th with the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lehman Bisbee pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone. Members of the public may also attend in person or by Microsoft Teams or by mobile app or phone. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss the agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comments will not be taken. We'll start out with rule call District 1.
Crosby is here.
District 2.
Gomez here.
And District 3, Antonori is here. All supervisors are present. Mr. Crosby via Teams. We will kick this off going to the Vice Chair, Mr. Crosby for his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much and I especially want to thank Ms. Lowenheim for her kind assistance today and yesterday trying to get this presentation put together in the circumstances where I'm in beautiful El Paso, Texas. And so, thank you, Ms. Lowenheim. So first of all, let's talk about the Board of Supervisors authorities primarily in ARS 11251 and point 18 of that section says, "The Board of Supervisors shall adopt rules of order," which I believe are way late, like years late. And I used to refer to, well, the non-existent rules of order that we operated under. So I hope that my colleagues have a booklet in front of them called Parliamentary Procedures at a Glance. Do you have that?
Yep, we got it.
Okay. So I hope that exploring that book will result in its adoption at a future time. And I would, now Ms. Lowenheim also sent everybody a file called Binder 1. So let's take a look at the file called Binder 1 and start at the top of that, if I can find it.
Yes, good.
Yeah, the top page is just my work session request form. It's pretty simple and to the point. And I believe that we need to be able to point to the rules and say, "This is what the rules are for when somebody might be tempted to circumvent the rules or make up the rules as they go along or have non-existent rules or something like that." So that's page 1 of 11. Next is what I call the County Bubble Chart, which says Cochise County Residence at the top. And it depicts somebody's version of an organizational chart, which I believe is incorrect. And I would point out that I don't want a county administrator position. There isn't one now, and I believe that having one is irrational because the county administrator does, position does not exist as per the ARS's yet. The clerk of the board position does exist. So it is irrational, in my opinion, to have a system where the county, the would-be non-existent county administrator is in supervision over the statutorily authorized clerk of the board. So I would also note that the so-called Attorney for the Board is not on the organizational chart at all. And perhaps we'll talk more about the interaction between the county attorney and the Board of Supervisors. Now I'm moving to page 3 and I don't remember. Oh, you know what? I've just also sent my colleagues and Laura an email and I'm just gonna pop it open real quick. That should be in your outlook and I sent it immediately before the meeting. And one of the things that I wanted to point out, this says, "More Crosby comments ref meeting procedures." And in the fattest paragraph, which is about six lines, six paragraphs down, it starts out, "In the meeting from November 2022." And proceeding to the third line after the period, I made a typographical error, which I want to correct. It says, "The county attorney and the deputy attorney," supposed to be general, "allowed the grand jury to be misled on various issues." So that should read, "County attorney and the deputy attorney general allowed the grand jury to be misled." And that's all I'm gonna talk about, about that policy. But going on to county admin supervisor, okay, the attorney for the Board of Supervisors is not depicted at all. And in the near future, speaking of the organizational chart, "We need to determine the titles and duties of Mr. Casey and Ms. Gilman. We need to determine what constitutes a day-to-day duty and the interaction of the Board of Supervisors and departments and electeds." And so that will be quite a challenge, I believe. So on page 3 of 11, in Roman numeral 3 and A, I'm gonna look at that real quick and see if we can find ourselves here. Okay, okay, it says, talking about the recessing the meeting. Let's see, let me make sure I'm in the right place.
Signing officer of the Board shall be the chair.
Yeah, listen, yeah, okay. So any place where it says, "The chairman shall have such and such a duty," I mean, this is another thing that needs to be tossed. This whole presumed rules of order that I'm showing you here is, should be tossed, and I'm gonna tell you why. Basically, because any place where it refers to the chairman has such and such of authority, it needs to be clear that the chairman can be overruled by the majority. There is no implication that the chairperson is somehow above the other members other than directing traffic and running the meeting. They're not higher, more important, all that kind of stuff. So if we go down to, let's take a look at, on page 5 of 11, several, scroll down a few. And I would note that the one that's labeled 4 of 11 is just 311 and I accidentally copied it twice when I was scanning it to Ms. Lowenheim. So talking about the page 5 of 11 is at the very bottom. And I would point out that the ability to limit debate is practically the ability to eliminate debate. And so we need to be, that's in paragraph E, the third paragraph down. And so, and then in paragraph F, it says, "Explanation for the membership," and that would need to be explained, what membership, Board of Supervisors' membership. So let's see, modifications may be made by the chairman or member and we need to figure out what exactly that would entail. In other words, I can change, if I've got a second to my motion, I can change what I have presented as a motion into anything. And if it gets a second and it's voted on, it's changed. So between the general rules that any decision by the chair could be overruled and anybody can change an agenda item into anything else if they get a second and a vote on it, that section needs to be exhausted. In the bottom of this, I've got scribbled on the side, "This is why the consent agenda is bad." And the consent agenda may limit a public speaker's ability to speak on more than one consent agenda. If the consent agenda is presented as one item, the way we've handled that so far is a supervisor has to be advised by a person that wants discussion on a certain agenda item and to break it out of the consent agenda item so it can be spoken on individually, so the member of the public can speak on it individually.
All right, hang on, hang on. So Laura, so the people, if they apply for a request to speak.
Yes.
Right? And it's an item that's on the consent agenda. Do we have to pull that up? We could just have them talk to the item if it's on the consent agenda, right?
You could, you pull it off, you would pull it off.
You have to pull it off?
Yeah, that's what we do because otherwise, let's say they want to speak on two different items on the consent agenda, then they'd need three minutes each.
It's up to the chairman. It's under the chairman's discretion to, or any other board member, for a consent agenda item.
So you're saying you're against them speaking three minutes on different items on the agenda?
No, it's a problem. If you say, the agenda, if you're gonna say the consent agenda is one single item, which is the way we vote on it 90%, 95% of the time. And so that potentially limits a person who wants to speak on more than one item to only three minutes when they might want to speak to two items and get three minutes each. I'm just pointing it out. It's not the end of the world.
I got you, I'm just trying to, we're trying to get clarification on the rule. So if somebody puts in a request to speak on three agenda items on the consent agenda, they get three, three, and three right now?
Well, they have to, they have to ask a supervisor to take it off the consent agenda. And to my knowledge, that's never been denied. So that's the way we've been handling it so far. If we want to keep handling it like that, that's okay.
I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know. That's why I'm asking. So usually what happens though, even though it's on the consent agenda, it's listed as an agenda item. And if somebody wants to put in a request to speak, they'll put it in as agenda item number two, which is on the consent agenda. And then we give them three minutes. So if they want that, I'm just, I want to know the legal rule here. I don't know what it is. Do you have to pull it off just to let them talk for three minutes?
It's not a legal rule, it's a rule of order.
Oh, yeah, okay, so then it's up to us then. I don't want to pull it off the consent agenda then. Because the consent agenda is for us to vote and just say, approve the consent agenda.
To discuss, yes.
To discuss. So there's no need to pull it off if the, unless, unless one of the supervisors wants to comment on it, then we got a problem. So as long as we do the standard, unless they address you directly, usually during public comment, we don't respond, then we're good, right? If, if.
So you've allowed the member of the public to speak to an item? And then if it's not moved off the consent agenda, you roll off, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just leave it on the consent agenda. However, if, let's say they attack one of us and you want to respond, does that trigger the, you gotta pull it off rule?
I don't know why it should. They've now talked to, made a comment directed at a supervisor.
Yeah, you know how like, when we do call the public, they can talk about anything, even stuff that's not on the agenda? But if they address us directly, they criticize me or Ms. Gomez or Mr. Crosby, we're allowed to respond.
So that's a general rule that allows you to respond.
Oh, that's not in the open meeting law for discussing something off the agenda?
Break it in.
Yes, it is.
Because you're open to it, why you can't speak on something.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Unless it hurts when they speak.
So how you want to organize that?
Right, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, this is on the agenda.
Right.
So we can respond if it's related to that item without pulling it off the consent agenda.
I believe you can.
Okay, that's, that's.
You can make that your rule. And then it would be up to the chair also to organize.
We still do one vote, is what I'm getting at, for the whole consent agenda.
Right, so, yeah. And then whether you want to allow like a real-time response right then or you want to wait till everything is discussed to the end of, you know, call the public and allow the supervisor then to address any comments. And that's been the way that we've done it.
The way Laura did it when the, one of the last meetings we had was, we had our call with the public and then she got her requests to speak for that. And then there was a separate pile she gave me, which was the actual per agenda item. So if somebody wants to speak three minutes per agenda item, as long as it's different and they're not up there pontificating for three minutes on the previous three minutes and then again on the previous three minutes, then I don't have a problem with them getting to talk three times as long as it's relative to the.
And the chair has flexibility about how much time to afford.
Yeah, so that's what you were getting at, right, Tom? Was the, as long as they're relative to the agenda item.
You need to be aware of it. It might be, you want somebody to be able to speak to such and such agenda item. And so that's how we've been handling it. They would come to you or they would come to their supervisor theoretically. And hey, I want to talk to agenda item three on the consent agenda. You would ask, like when it's a motion for the consent agenda, you'd say, "Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna approve items 1 through 5 and 7 through 10, but 6 is gonna be pulled off for separate discussion." That's how we usually do it.
What I'm saying, we don't, we don't, if they're just gonna comment on it, we don't need to pull it off. The consent agenda is if one of us has a problem with that agenda item and then we want to have a separate debate to discuss that item, then it comes off the consent agenda. But if it's just people talking, that's what I'm getting at here. There's no need to pull it off.
Okay, I would say, it would be either one. And I've done it so I could talk about it and I've done it so other people can talk about it. Just to note, the ARS section that has to do with individual members of the public body may respond to criticism, that is 38-431-01, paragraph I, as in India.
Good. What I'm getting at is, I'm all for free speech. So if they want to talk for three minutes, as long as it's three separate agenda items and that their topic is related to agenda item, I'm fine with that.
And, you know, Chairman, you're right, somebody gets up and they want to talk about 13 consent agenda items, you could tell when you've got like a minute each.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. Well, we'll play that as it goes. I mean, but right now, we'll just give them the standard three minutes like everybody else gets. And if they get abusive with it, and there's always that one guy that gets to think he's game in the system that wants to put a request to speak in for every agenda item and then he reads the Reader's Digest from the pudding. I saw that in Pima County, by the way. I don't know if you guys ever saw that.
No.
That guy that gets up and just reads for three minutes out of some book.
Okay, meanwhile, back to my presentation. I believe I've sent each of you a copy of an email that says, "More Crosby comments reference meeting procedures." And so in my opinion, this policy should be implemented. The Board of Supervisors staff shall not interact with the county attorney's office except through a meeting with the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors staff is the Board of Supervisors. No attorneys supervise the Board of Supervisors. No attorneys are in the chain of command of the supervisors. If an attorney thinks that they enforce open meeting laws, that needs to be parsed out. Enforcement implies supervision and ARS 251 clearly says, "The supervisors supervises all county officers." So I'm not gonna read that. We had distribution of powers under Article 3 where it talks about the division of powers between the legislative branch and the judicial branch, for instance. And I have also noted that we've got a pretty clear outline of the relationship between the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney. Not a full outline, not a complete exhaustive description of interaction, but it talks about the basics. In ARS 251, that's us, and 11532, that's the county attorney. Now, in my opinion, continuing, because of ARS 251, that's us, and 41193, that is the state attorney general. The county attorney has a permanent inherent conflict of interest in any matter having to do with the state attorney general and the Board of Supervisors because the county, because the county attorney has a split chain of command.
I got you, Tom. I actually agree with you on that one and I have actually brought that issue up. And even Zuko in the meeting even said she's got heartburn with that provision, which we gotta fix somehow. I don't know.
I was just gonna say, I'd love to shop this with the board in a separate work session. I don't think it really has to do with the rules of order.
Well, I do, Mr. Correa, I do think it has something to do with the rules of order because what I'm talking about is the failures that have occurred in the past and how we're gonna address them in the future and so on.
I've talked to Mr. Correa about these as well. And so we are trying to implement safeguards to prevent that from happening again. And I think he's well aware of my concern about attorney-client privilege and who is working as counsel for the Board of Supervisors. Correct. He has no supervisory authority over us, Tom. And I don't, I don't think he's implying that he does, but he does have a duty to inform us if we are straying from the law so that we don't get in trouble. And that's, that's the approach.
That is, and that's actually what I'm getting at right now because we do have an agenda item that talks about rules. And now I think we're talking about the role of the county attorney in regards to.
Well, he's talking about, in the org chart, which we could argue is what he's getting at. He's getting at, the org chart doesn't have you listed as a subordinate or superior or whatever, right? So we would, in the army, we would call this, you are dashlined.
Dashlined.
To the, to the, to the side.
Attachment is attached.
That is correct, right? So, so, but I'm getting, what I, give me two seconds. So what I'm getting at is, that aspect, we could always do that. That's, that's nothing, saying that we are dashlining the county attorney to the board because it is a separate elected office and it has separate rules. But the one that he's bringing up now, that one, the fact that the attorney general has oversight authority over counties' attorneys, that's something we have to deal with and we've talked about on a separate basis, that we gotta go fight that fight somewhere else, not here in this meeting. The discussion that Mr. Crosby brought up was, what is the affiliation or relationship with the county attorney? And he made the point that the county attorney doesn't have the authority to direct the Board of Supervisors. And I would say that is true.
I agree with that.
Right, right. So I don't see, Tom, do you, are you okay with that?
Well, let's just continue because I don't expect to get everything resolved right now. And hopefully, I can boil it down to about three issues and I can expedite and we can knock it out, man. So let's talk about.
Hang on, hang on, let Kathleen go. Kathleen's got a question.
I have a question when you say, if the attorney thinks they enforce OMLs, that needs to be parsed out. What do you mean by parsed out?
I've heard our friend, Mr. Correa says, say something like, "The county attorney enforces open meeting laws."
Oh, maybe.
I'm sure he said enforce, whether he meant that or not, or he's quoting statute, I don't know.
And one other question, this chart, is this an old chart or is this from past years?
That's what's current, but I recognize that it's no good, just like a lot of the stuff that I'm showing you is no good.
This is what.
So, yeah, so that's a chart that was created several county administrators ago. We have not updated it. It's due for an update.
Okay, so let's talk about this binder one and go to the bottom of 7 of 11 and the top of 8 of 11. And this is what I was frequently accused of violating open meeting laws about is, is talking about something that isn't specifically in the two sentences or 15 words of an agenda item. That's not an open meeting law violation because the open law meeting laws contain this clause at the very end, "Other matters related thereto," okay? And so I just want to point that out, that that is a failure of the previous system and we need to make sure that nobody gets squashed talking about something besides the 15 or 20 words or two sentences that are part of an agenda item on the agenda that we look at every day.
If I can speak to that.
Right, sir.
Tom's absolutely right. The way the statute's written, Part 2, talks about what is on the agenda at the beginning and then it talks about what can be discussed. So the only things that can be considered at the meeting are these things that have been agendized. And then it says, and Tom finishes the quote record, "The public body may discuss, consider, or make decisions only on matters listed on the agenda and any other matters related thereto." So you're limited to your action to the things that were on the agenda.
Correct.
But as far as discussing, if something is related, and again, the chair, you know.
Well, again, I've got experience doing this. We used to call it bridge building, right? Where you had your agenda item and then you would build your bridge to the other thing you want to talk about so that you could show the correlations to the agenda item.
Yeah, and as far as that goes, this is a decision for the board to make or any board. The prior county attorney, I think the chief civil, you know, took the position that they did want to be flagging anything that looked like an open meeting law violation. And I'm sure Mr. Crosby feels that a little too.
As long, but I mean, I get the point. The point is, as long as the action remains relative to the agenda item and we don't discuss an action or vote on or have a discussion where, hey, later we're gonna vote on whatever, then we're fine. As long as you're just talking about.
Right. And I would be happy to kind of raise my hand towards you if I think something's going to.
Yeah, yeah, advise us.
But if your direction is to, don't do that, just sit and ask, I can do that too. It's, the direction in the county attorney statute is to attend the meetings, not to supervise, not to interpret that you're violating your meeting law. But I can give you that flagging if you think that's helpful.
And, because I'm new at this, right? And I mean, I observe some of what Mr. Crosby, our supervisor Crosby is talking about. But if it doesn't have to do with actually taking a vote, then it's not violating the open meetings law. So say we're talking about something, say a court of entry, and then in our discussion we say something like, "Oh, we should be going, maybe we need to strategize to lobby for this stuff." But that is not.
No, that's not, right.
Anything to do with voting and strategizing and it's talking about, having, actually it doesn't have anything to do with.
Well, it's related to.
And it's related to, yes.
That's the pressure, right.
All right.
Can I ask him what happened with this open meeting law thing? What brought this about? Is that, can I ask him that?
Yeah, you can ask him that.
Yeah, so Tom, so explain to me, I remember hearing about it. What was the accusation regarding the open meeting law violation? And what was the outcome of that? It was drawn or?
There's like one after another, but the primary, the primary one that we're talking about and the violation of, you know, the most egregious stuff was, was in the events of November through December of 2022 when the, we had four people, we had the county administrator, the county clerk, Ms. English and Ms. Roberts apparently took it upon themselves to allow Ms. English to overrule the majority of the board. And that corrupt action resulted in me being accused of delaying the canvas and that accusation continues to this day. And ultimately, it was by Ms. English's overstepping her authority and overruling the majority of the vote of the board that certification was delayed. So I mean, I could give you as much detail as you want. I've, I've, I've given you.
I'm talking about the open meeting law piece. The open meeting law that you're talking about now because you emphasize other matters related there too. So is someone, did someone accuse you of violating open meeting law?
Oh, yeah, probably 20 times, Mr. Chair. And I can list them as the most egregious up to, not that big a deal, but of all the accusations so far, I have not been fined. I have not, nobody's sent me a letter from the attorney general's office saying, "You violated open meeting laws." So I would point out.
They were just accusations made.
Yeah, anybody can accuse you and then you've got a ton of paperwork to do and I'm sure Ms. Gilman will attest to that and others.
But they interrupted you every time you were talking with, that you were, I mean, I think I remember, I don't know what it was, seeing a video where you were talking and it was constantly, you were being, actually overspoken. They were speaking over you so you couldn't speak and make your point. Is that also what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, but there's, there's, it was selectively enforced. You know, if we're gonna want to use this term of enforcement, it was selectively enforced based on my political viewpoint. And it was okay for Ms. English to let Cory Lorick, the state elections director, speak without being on the agenda, let the ACIP attorney speak without being on the agenda, let McIntyre speak without being on the agenda, let other county supervisors speak without being on the agenda. But yet I had these multiple accusations against me. So it was just getting ridiculous.
Was there also the time when they didn't allow the four people who were here to talk about the machines and they never got a chance to speak either because they just weren't? Even though they had put in some forms, they just were denied the ability to speak?
Well, in that case, Ms. Gomez, I would, I would point out that Cory Lorick was allowed to speak. She was speaking on the telephone in a meeting. I had, one of my presenters, Paul Rice, was ready to interact with her and ask her questions because he claimed that the voting system laboratories were not accredited. Cory Lorick, of course, claimed they were accredited. And, and so that was a violation. Like I said, she wasn't there. She didn't fill out a public speaker request. But my guy did. And so, but, but they changed the agenda item between November 18th, which is what Madam Judd.
You're just trying to codify this in a way that that doesn't happen again.
Right, you know, I mean, it should be very clear.
So what, what do we do to hold, and this is for me, so if Mr. Crosby and Ms. Gomez disagree with me, evidently it sounds like Ms. English ignored the other two board members. What enforcement mechanism is there to force me to stand out?
That's, that's a good question.
I mean, so.
That's why I'm in court.
No, that's why, that's what we're trying to find out, that maybe there's a mechanism we can create. I don't know.
So you have a situation where. So you have a situation where the chair is insisting on talking about something or having a speaker.
And the two of them say, no.
No, you don't want this person to be permitted to address the public?
No, 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 no. It's, evidently he's saying that there was, we have a rule that you got to turn in a request to speak. You're allowed to speak to the public, but it sounds like the chair at the time brought people in, had them ready to speak and then brought them up to the microphone to speak on agenda items. And then other people that were, weren't allowed to speak because the chair made that determination. So what, it sounds like that he and Ms. Judd had a vote and it was kind of like overruled by the chair. That's what's, I don't remember this, but that's what it sounds like to me.
I can get real specific, Mr. Chair. This was out of the minutes, November 18th, 2022. Supervisor Crosby restated the motion as follows. Table accepting the election results until Monday, the 28th of November at 10:00 AM until such evidence about lawful certification by an accredited laboratory is presented and confirmed by persons, not documents, persons with expertise in that field. And so what they did is they, and Vice Chairman seconded and we passed it two to one against Madam English. Okay, so we're talking about speakers and we're talking about confirmed by persons. So we're not talking about documents. And so the claim is that the four people I mentioned before decided, well, we don't need to hear from speakers and we don't need to hear from persons because we have all these documents. In other words, they prevented interaction.
So how do you, how do you, how do you fix that? How do you, how do you?
Send me money.
Well, I think that's, that's the case and it's just, you know, dysfunction on the board. If it's the chairperson who's trying to accomplish something, our board.
So in the legislature, when let's just say the Speaker of the House loses the support of the members, someone stands up and says, you know, I motion to vacate the chair because he has lost the support of the, of the body and they vote him out as chair.
I mean, we don't have that written, I hope we never have to have that rule, but.
No, but there's a reason for that rule because if you get a rogue Speaker of the House or Speaker or Senate President and he loses the support of the caucus, there's a mechanism where you can do a vote on the floor to vacate the chair. And then you, both parties go back into their, let's appoint a new speaker mode. You saw that happen in DC two years ago.
Yeah. But wouldn't you step in if Crosby and I stayed voted for something and then Chairman, that's Laura decides he's going to override us, wouldn't you as the county attorney step in and say?
At least previous point, he doesn't have that authority.
Isn't he supposed to advise us?
Well, I don't think you're far off track. And I think that your option is also something we could look into and, you know, look at the rule that the state legislature has. In Section 3C of these, these were rules proposed by.
So what this is a partial document of the rules that were drafted. I don't know, maybe in 2023 or 2022, they never were adopted by the board. It was, it's been in draft form since that.
Right, but they're pretty good as more than, more than start. So in Section 3C, it says the chairman has the support of the county attorney or the county administrator if there's disorder. And it's really talking about the problem being disordered. So, you know, I don't know if that gets you quite as far as what Chairman Gomez is suggesting, but it is a way, I think, to force, to bring up and focus on the fact that there's somebody who's running roughshod.
You would only come into play when two of us saying, hey, chairman's out of order about them. When, is that the rule that the attorney say, I agree with?
Maybe it should be, it should be in the rules. There should be some sort of process.
Here it says, chairman will have the services of the county administrator slash deputy county administrator, clerk of the board. If required by any member to preserve the order and enforce the rules and orders. You could have another part of this rule or another rule that says that a majority, you know, if they have voted and the chair, you know, is not.
Abiding by.
Abiding by that, that they could have the assistance of the county administrator, deputy county administrator. But that doesn't really get you all the way, I think. And what would that assistance look like? Yeah, what does that look like? It doesn't say.
No, and it doesn't address what if the county administrator and the county attorney are complicit with the chair or the person that's trying to overrule the other two? That's the situation that I'm talking about. They were complicit.
So maybe the best course is to have something like, you know, remove the chair by a majority.
I mean, it's in Roberts rules too.
I knew that, that was why they wanted to remove my father, right, from when he was mayor. They had the place and they came to remove him and then, you know, it ended up not happening, but that was. Yeah, it's actually, they, they do, they decide they have the competence, I guess, is the terminology.
There's, in Roberts rules, I'm trying to remember from memory because I don't have it handy. There is a fishing in there where you have an unruly chair. Right? So the unruly chair, the body can stand up a motion that, and it's a temporary maneuver that the body is able to temporarily remove the chair for that meeting or that.
And they can call for that, right?
Yeah, they can call for that and then they immediately vote to appoint a temporary chairman. And then the chairman still gets to vote, he still gets to, but he can't run the meeting anymore. Somebody else runs the meeting.
So he's removed from that position here, remains on the board. That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I think I can address your idea there. And basically what happened that time is that there was an implication that we were going to have the interaction on the 28th. Okay? So it didn't happen the 18th when Paul Rice and Cory Lorick was on the phone and Paul Rice is standing in front of me. The implication was, the motion that we made was it's going to happen the 28th. Okay, so there wouldn't have been a reason to remove the chair. Okay? So by the, by the 28th, you know, we find out that she changed the agenda item to not allow my presenters to present and then we, that was on a Monday and we got sued on Thursday. So that's how that went.
Yes. Now I'm trying to think how you deal with that. So again, I'm speaking for myself here. So say you guys in a meeting, we say we're going to do this and then I sneak off and I go tell Ms. Gilman or Laura that we're going to change the agenda, you know, and don't tell Crosby and Gomez, right? And we're going to go this. And then, then the next meeting gets posted 24 hours prior and they, they see that that's not the agenda that they agreed to before. What's the remedy for them to change back?
Well, if you tabled the item, I would be obligated to put, keep it on the agenda as is to the date that you said, and then it had to.
So how did that happen?
My memory is very hazy. I haven't reviewed all those, that information in quite a while, but. So I can't speak to what happened, but I think if you, if you're talking about the situation you proposed, I think we would need to, if such a situation occurred where you told us to change the agenda item, then that agenda appears. The board could make a motion, I'm just spitballing here. The board could make a motion to amend the agenda within the meeting. And the other two members could say, no, we want to amend the agenda, second it in the.
Okay, this is how it went. On the 28th.
You're right. I don't know. I can't.
In the, on the 28th, the agenda item could not be removed from the table because it wasn't what we tabled on the 18th. And so we reiterated, we're going to have this presentation. It's going to be on Friday with my presenters and the SOS people. And they sued us on Thursday. That's how desperate they were not to hear about this voting system test lab accreditation issue. They did it three times. They did it the 24th, the 18th.
I should say. You're saying unilaterally the chair with the county attorney and the county administrator.
Yes.
And the clerk?
Yes.
Were you the clerk?
No.
None of those people are currently employed. Not because.
Tom, I don't want to, I don't want to sound, I have significant sympathy for your plight, don't get me wrong. But this sounds like a once in a millennium problem and not something that occurs. This, this, this was a.
Actually, it happened, besides that, it happened on February 22nd, 2022, about a COVID meeting. The administrator changed my agenda item on the, on February 22nd, 2022 also, and that is also in the minutes.
So there, so in the legislature, you have House rules, you have Senate rules, you have Roberts rules. There are generally accepted rules of order out there. So what, what it sounds like we need to do is we need to find something close to what we want, put it into a document and then vote on.
So the document, the partial document that Supervisor Crosby provided, that we have that in full, we can continue to work on that and, and address some of the concerns that Supervisor Crosby mentions here. If he's, if, if that's something he is willing to work through with us.
So you know, it's way, way from anything worthwhile. And what we should do is to drop the booklet, adopt, well, in my opinion, we should explore adopting the booklet. We should explore making a policy that says that county staff shall not interact with the county attorney's office except through a meeting with the board of supervisors. And we can, you know, I'd be glad to work with you, Ms. Gilman. But for this meeting, I think that, that, and for the third item, we should explore. I don't want a county admin position to exist anymore because that was the cause of all the problems. Well, a big problem. So there's three items. Explore adopting the booklet. Explore the policy, BOs staff shall not interact with the county attorney's office except through a meeting with the board of supervisors and explore, we're not going to have a county administrator.
But then what would we have in its place?
This is a meeting about the rules.
Yeah, so, so that's a, that's a.
We can work session about.
Yeah, so let's, so for example, I'm looking at the Arizona Legislature, 56 legislature rules. The way they write the rules is they have the rule itself, which is given a rule number, rule number one. And then everything related to that rule procedurally is listed as one A, one B, one C. Then they have rule number two, then they have rule number three, they have rule number four. They don't write it like bylaws and I, and there's a reason that they do that is because if you get up and you see something that's being done that's in violation of the rules, you rise to point of order and you get up and then say, Mr. Chair, I rise to point out a violation of rule number seven. And I would like to bring that to the attention of the body and you basically could read the rule if you want. And then you say, I, I motion that the sergeant of arms or whoever, you know, enforce rule number seven. Or you ask the chair to enforce rule number seven, right? So I would think that it would be better, this is just my style because I, I'm used to this. And it's the same way in Congress, they write the rules by number, right? They're not section one, section three, subsection four, that can get confusing. So you just write the rule. So we start out, we just start out rule, what's rule number one? Rule number one is, for example, we all show up five minutes before the meeting starts. All right, rule, rule number two, the chair calls, you know, I don't know, the role in accordance. Well, I'm just saying, that's, it's plain language. Right, plain language. You just set the, you set the rules up and you put them, and, and these guys have, I forgot what it was. They got like 60, 63 rules?
It doesn't have like subsection A or it's just.
They do, they do.
But not a lot of it, right?
Yeah, not, it's not, it's not bylaws. So they got rule 38, right? The procedure of records retention and destruction schedule, right? They've got rule 24, right? Personal financial interests and conflicts of interest, right? You got, you got rule 29, parliamentary practice and procedure while on the floor, right? Rule, rule 28, the journal kept by the clerk, we'll just say, in this case, it was the secretary, right? So the journal kept by, how the journal, and it says, here's, here's the House shall keep a journal of its proceedings and the request of two members, at the request of two, two members, the As and Nays on roll call of any question shall be entered into the Arizona. Hang on, shall be entered in accordance with the Arizona Constitution article four. It, it just basically lists the procedure, right? That basically, you know, they keep the journal. And then any motion made to the House and entertained by the speaker shall be entered into the journal. Any motion made by a member shall be entered into the, into the journal. Requesting that it be placed, an item be placed into the journal, you know, after approval by the chair shall be placed in the journal. Right? So it lists, you know, how we're going to run the journal. And then, but I'm just reading the House rules, right? So what I'm saying is, Tom, is maybe we start out, and this is actually, I think, a good idea to establish similar to this format, start out with rule number one. We could use this as the baseline, right? But instead of saying, you know, section two, paragraph B, or whatever, and Roman numeral three, Roman, just say rule number one, right? Rule number one is whatever we want, right? Rule number two, you know, I mean, I mean, just to get the baseline. And then, once we have that, then we could always amend it and you could do it at any meeting you want. You could say, I propose a motion, a motion to amend the rules. I want to add rule number 38. We think, I think we need, here's my rule, my proposed rule, we debate it, we vote on it. If it passes, it becomes rule 38. If it doesn't, then it goes, goes name, goes to the side. So I mean, maybe that's what we just, we just list the rules, one through whatever, how many we want on how we'll adopt and then adopt those rules to, and that's the way we conduct the meeting. If anybody violates the rules, two or more members, a member rises and says, Mr. Chairman, I believe we are in violation of rule number 36, point of order, violation of rule number 36, and I direct the chair to enforce rule number 36. And if the chair refuses to enforce 36, two members can say, hey, I made, I motioned and under rule 17, rule 17 says we can temporarily move the chair because the chairman's not following the rules. And then you vote on that, two to one vote. And then how that's enforced is, I guess, we don't have a sergeant of arms.
I was joking.
How do you get, we don't have a sergeant of arms, so what do we do with that case? I don't know, right? Because Sergeant Arms would escort the chair off the chair and make him go sit in his seat on the floor. And then, and then they vote to put a new chair in temporarily.
Or if not, everybody just leaves the room, basically. It's meetings over till we get ordered.
Yeah, I mean, but usually that's the case. We have the sergeant of arms enforcing it. I don't know.
In the past, when we.
In a term, you would have a bailiff.
And we have, we'd have the county sheriff to be here if we knew there was going to be a more contentious subject that we were concerned about. They would remove somebody at the direction of the board or the chair.
Right, so.
They don't do it.
So that's what, I mean, that's the remedy. The remedy is just say, you know, here's the rules. And if a chairman violates the rules, a simple two to one vote temporarily removes the chairman until the chairman behaves or implies with the rule.
Oh, that count, that, that demands a two to one vote?
That's correct.
Well, you don't, you might not get that.
Then, then you don't remove the chair. And I mean, that's just the, that's the way the system's been derived. And it's, that's the way it is in Roberts rules too, Tom. If you recall our meeting, our meeting at the Republican Party back in August that we played, that we invoked that rule under Roberts rules and temporarily removed the chair for being disruptive. Remember?
Okay, do you, do you want to explore adopting parliament, the booklet, parliamentary procedures at a glance at a future meeting in the not too distant future?
Yeah, we could, we, I think we, I think we need to have everybody, well, I'm trying to think how we should do this, have, have another work session where we all get together and offer what we believe are rules. Or you can do that. We, you can have you draft the initial draft of rules and then Kathleen and I can offer amendments to that if you want to do that. But just adopting, I don't know if we want to go all the way in because we have a nice, I don't want to say informal, but a, we follow to a degree the rules of parliamentary procedure. We just don't follow, follow them rigidly because we aren't really a large. Because we aren't really a large legislative body that has to keep order, because we got fifty guys in the audience, just the three of us.
Yeah, kind of, sure, sure. First, I I agree with Tom, I told him that, that there should be written rules adopted because that's fair, consistent, and transparent to the public.
And it's required by eleven two fifty-one eighteen.
Required by statute. Um, and, uh, Chairman Antonori, I I do like your suggestion of the number of rules because that, to my mind, is also, uh, in the way of transparency. The public can read it and understand it, and it's not complicated.
Yeah, and it's.
It's transparent. And then do you have another session on just like the the work chart?
This is, this is, what we, I don't want to adopt this whole clock, because, because then you open up the the door, I I just remember Jack Harper being the 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 expert at parliamentary jujitsu. And and he, when you adopt Roberts rules as the formal, formal thing, then you get, no offense, outhouse lawyers, I was going to use another word, but outhouse lawyers, they go, all right, well, according to section seventeen, page twelve, Roberts rules amended version number three, Mr. Chair, you have to let me do this, this, and this. And they can, they could really gum, gum things up, and they do it in D.C. all the time.
This is to my point, the public doesn't trust that.
Right.
Right, they see people playing games with the rules and actual, you know.
Right, so I mean, what we can do is we can take portions of this that we think are important and adopt them into a rule. You know, not necessarily the whole book, but.
I think it'd be better to, uh, explore adopting the whole book until we come up with something better. And then we will comply with, uh, eleven two fifty-one eighteen, and we will be able to say, these are the rules. And and it's it's better than having a free-for-all where the opposite end of the spectrum is we do whatever the heck we feel like and violate people's rights and so on and so forth, which is the way it was.
There's no way that I'm going to be able, whatever, to to, if the followers, I will be, you'll be throwing me out all the time. To be honest with you, I mean.
Yeah, so so I I I get it, right? So so Tom was on city council for a while, I was in the legislature for a while, you know, we know from, I'm, trust me, from the legislature, I I watched some of the most unbelievable parliamentary parlor tricks you have ever seen. Because people can hold up Roberts rules and and say, oh, on rule seventeen, we're going to adopt Roberts rules. Well, in Roberts rules, you know, and everybody in the, every member's like, oh, you know, because it's designed to thwart the effort of the body, right? Not, it's minority rule versus majority rule, that's 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 what you get, so I I'm just saying.
Does he, does, does Tom not think that we could do a good job of of doing like what you were saying?
Well, what he's worried about, and I don't, let's just say, I'm just not saying, let's just say I go rogue.
Yeah.
And I get tired of it, and I want to just start running over you and Tom. Tom wants a mechanism, and I understand that.
Yeah.
To to reel me in, right? If I get out of control, which is what I think he believes occurred previously, right? So when you have a rule, a rule is a mechanism for enforcement, right? So you can't just arbitrarily say, well, I think you're being a bad guy, Mr. Antonori, I want you to take it off. Well, you can't, that's that's hard to enforce, right? But if you say, hey, you're violating rule number seventeen, and I want you to repair, or what's the legal term, or remedy, and and start following the rule, and if you don't follow the rule, I'm going to get Ms. Gomez to vote, to remove you with me, we'll vote to remove you. That's what I think he's asking.
And that's an order, right? And that's, that's fair.
Right, right, so some of these, I I I think can be adopted into rules, don't get me wrong. Like, to fix the time for the next meeting, the process to adjourn, the question of of privilege, yeah, I I get it. But what I, to Ms. Gomez's point, if you look at the question of privilege, that's two pages of rules under questions of privilege. And I, I mean, you would, you would have to have literally, the three of us would be sitting at the table reading through, flipping through this book, trying to find, you know, make sure we're not violating this or not violating that. I mean, I I prefer an informal, we we follow general rules to, for the legal purposes of proving stuff. But I mean, I I prefer somewhat of an informal process here, unless, you know, we're doing something that's a gross violation or or stepping on somebody, like me stepping on Ms. Gomez. Or Mr. Crosby stepping on me or whatever, then we have to have a mechanism there. So having, having a rule based on this would be okay, yeah. That's what I'm getting, or having a couple of rules based on this, right? So having a.
Well, and I believe in the draft rules that have been started.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, yeah, that, but.
As far as the draft rules have been started, you're going to have to toss out all references to county administrator unless my colleagues want a county administrator, which I do not.
But is that something else we can't dismiss?
See, we don't have to include that, Tom, that's what I'm getting at, in the rules, we could, we can adopt whatever we want.
Have you read the whole booklet?
No, I have not.
Do you really find it that challenging?
No, I have, I have, I I I remember the onerous problem of having to abide by Roberts rules of order, which is basically what this is based off.
Well, it's not two inches thick, though.
What's that?
Very small.
I I I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Tom, say it again.
I said, it's very small, it's not two inches thick, like Roberts rules of order, it's like an encyclopedia or something.
I know, and you got to go to parliamentary procedure school and get certified and.
That booklet is made for us and what we do.
But you know, I also followed by Robert rules a while when I was on the school board in New York City. And we had, you know, seven people, but it was, became very cumbersome because of the language and understanding when you had to do it. And so it made the meetings really long.
See, the, if you look at these numbers, they all correspond to Roberts rules. That's what this, this is an abbreviated Roberts rules sort of Cliff Notes book, is what this is. Right, it talks about, so there's a lot of stuff in here that we don't do, like, we don't call for division, right? We don't call for division, we we, our votes are always, our our votes are always on record, I, 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 right? We we know we don't have to, we don't have to have a parliamentary physical vote where we all hit a little button and vote yes or vote no.
If it doesn't apply to us, then it doesn't apply to us.
Well, that's what I'm seeing, so, you know, adopting the whole thing, if you say, okay, you know, we're going to adopt this whole book, then, you know, there's a motion, a provision in here to suspend the rules. Right, says, hey, I just, you know, a simple two to two to one vote suspends the rules, and then you get trampled on. So do you want that in there?
I don't know.
No, that's what I'm getting at, that's, I don't, that's why I think we should do some working sessions to basically start with rule number one through ten, rule ten, eleven through twenty, you know. So the first one is, the basic rules we need to function a meeting would be rule one through ten, right? And I'm, not just my suggestion. I mean, I just don't think adopting this whole thing is going to, is going to help us. Although I get your point, there's some good stuff in here.
That we can adopt.
Okay, well, let's talk about my other issue to explore, which is, B, uh, Board of Supervisor staff shall not interact with the county attorney's office except through a meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Would you like to explore that in a future?
You can make that rule, rule number twelve.
I I think we should talk about that in a session.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, you can make that a rule that, you know, I mean, whatever, but I mean.
Okay, so is that going to come up at a, a meeting real soon, Mr. Chair?
I guess we got to set up another, another work session to begin drafting rules.
And who would you like to draft those rules?
You know what, you know, I guess it's not a work session, hang on, it would not be a work session. Because we're going to be voting to vote it as a rule or not voting it as a rule. Where we propose rules and then we debate the rule, and then we vote whether or not to adopt it as a rule.
Yeah, it's your, your convention. But I I think it would make sense to have some rules drafted ahead, looking at Sharon.
But I'm.
You know, just kidding, I'm just saying, you know, I think it would be on, on myself.
Okay.
Ms. Gomez and Tom to draft some rules.
Then come together.
And then come together and then.
So we have to do it separately and then come together?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can do it, it would, would and you know, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to, there's got to be a basis, we could argue, right? So I mean, I know Tom doesn't like this, this one here, but I mean, there's probably some good stuff in here that we can, we can adopt, right?
So if you all three have like a list of rules that you want to propose, and you can give them to, um, staff to combine. You could then go through them, just like we did with this, this last, um, selection of the.
Usually.
Or just strike out the ones you don't, you know, you don't agree on, and that would be an efficient way of looking at it through you, you know, right?
So where's one on here? The pages are not here.
It's not that you're directing, stop.
Is this, is this, like, yeah, where's one, or does it start with one here?
Is that one?
What is one?
That's missing pitch, yeah, that's what I figured.
And then I guess the other thing is another, is it another discussion, we talk about the role of county administrator, because.
That is another discussion.
Okay, so that has to be another discussion, because I think there's a key to having one person, you know, so I don't want to talk anymore because we're violating, but.
Got you, that, that's good, go next to it.
Yeah, our descriptions are scheduled for now.
So that would be where we discuss it, I'll have to, I'll be assuming that.
That may need to be added on the agenda.
And what time is that meeting?
That's at one o'clock, but I would want to take a look at that agenda, if we're going to be talking about more than just the job descriptions.
Right, well, Tom has expressed an interest in, um, having some sort of resolution, I guess, of the county attorney.
Want to look at the org chart and the way departments report, right, and who they report to. So I mean, I don't know if you want to set that up as a figure general.
As a separate, that's why I'm wondering if we just do it right after the other, uh, Tuesday. So you guys don't have to keep.
No. I have to be moving my stuff, it's just.
I I don't see this as an urgent.
Is, there's nothing that gives us a deadline for adopting the rules in Title XI, right?
Um, it just says we have to have, it's required and we haven't done it.
Yeah, but there's no.
Too, they have a resolution on file for, uh, it's fourteen seventy-nine. And open twenty fourteen, there is some rules in in existence, it's not to the degree that you're talking about today.
So you're talking about next Tuesday, it only really gives the weekend to be able to.
Yeah.
Do this, I mean, it's not a lot of time.
I I was, I'm sorry, I was talking, the rules I was talking about, Tom's got an interest in, uh, having the board director, the attorney, not to talk to staff or the board supervisors, or I'm not sure what he's, what he's looking for exactly. So that, I think, deserves a, a discussion.
But even, even like, um, when you're talking about the the roles of the staff, which then would be part of the whole chart, when the organization chart, that's only giving us like, like four days in the weekend. So I think that that's not enough time for me, I'm thinking, I don't know, you guys feel that you can do it that quickly? But I would like to, if we're going to be doing some, like, creating the whole new organization chart, doing all these different things, I think we need a little bit more time than two rushes.
We need to chop it up, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, we need, like I said, we, we could, we could do this rules, one through ten. Let's talk, let's just do ten rules.
Okay.
All right, come in, come in with your ten rules.
On the twenty-fifth.
Well, it it doesn't have to be.
Because I'm just trying to figure out the timing of this, you know, so when you're talking about, so on the twenty-fifth, what we're talking about is just the staff.
Twenty-fifth Supervisor Crosby asked for a work session on job descriptions for the county administrator and deputy county administrator. So that's that work session, it's just job descriptions?
Or just those two?
And I, and I would like to, again, I I'd like to talk about, um, the org chart itself, right? I'm, I'm, again, I, I, the way that the various department heads report in and how we would fit Sharon and Joe in there.
Which that, which falls into the job description.
Yeah, so.
Because it's more than just what you do, it's like how you interact with the.
Well, the point I was getting at is, is every elected official has authority over their office. And I, to Tom's point, in between us and the authority of our office is the county administrator. Right, where that is not necessarily the case. So this is, this, I don't think I can talk about this, but if you have the the governor, for example, the governor has all the department heads report to her.
Right.
And and serve at her pleasure. However, she has a chief of staff that actually does the day-to-day running of sort of her cabinet, her, her, her people that 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 report. The president, right, has the White House Chief of Staff. Everybody in the White House is under the the pleasure of the president, but guess who runs the White House? The Chief of Staff, so that that was kind of my.
But this, would we be the only county who would be doing this so different?
Well, that title, yeah, that's, you know, but I, but I'm saying, like, for the Army, right? I just, the Army, the Army Chief of Staff, that's the man.
Yeah.
You know, is the Chief of Staff, right? So but, you know, everybody.
So that's next Tuesday.
So that's next Tuesday.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, so so we will, we'll have that discussed. Part of that is, is the, is the job, now, I, without getting into that, uh, the rule piece of this, there there's nothing wrong, and this could be probably a legacy that will carry on for, if we do it right. If we do it wrong, the next board will fold it up. But if we, if we do it right, you know, like they do the House rules, they almost always adopt the same rules. And they'll add maybe one or two a session, if they're like, or change one or two a session. But those things have been going on for a hundred years, all right? So that's what I'm getting at, so if we do it right, rule one through ten, rule eleven through twenty, rule however many we think we need to to efficiently run this body and and to set down guardrails so that we operate within those guardrails, whatever those are. Let's take our time and and chop it up into into pieces and start building the rulebook. We could always move the order around, we can always add and delete later, but just to get started, I get to Mr. Crosby's point, we do need some rules. Uh, and and because of what has occurred, we also need a mechanism for temporarily removing the Chair if the Chair is in subordinate and doesn't, doesn't follow the rules, then there's got to be a mechanism for getting the Chair off the the Chairs and moving the Chair to different Chair and then have somebody else take over as Chair, and then having a, again, I don't know, maybe we 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 bring the, a constable in here and have a, have a, have a constable as the enforcement mechanism and give the guy a couple bucks every meeting for coming into the meeting, you know, to be. I'm just, you know what I mean, right? I mean, somebody, somebody, you know, like a bailiff or something like that, right? So the bailiffs are deputies, right?
Mm-hmm, they're deputies.
Yeah, but, you know, like, you know, give the the poor guy in Wilcox something to do, bring him down here, have him, you know, be the.
Is there a busy constable?
The sheriff's the constable's the one that's always busy, and the other two don't quite have the workload, so I try, I was trying to invent workload. So that's, that's all I'm trying to say, so, so, but, um, something, you got to have some mechanism. Because if I say, screw you, I'm not getting out of my chair.
Well, you know, and this is me, I have no voice on this body, but there have been times when there's been disorder. And it would be nice to have somebody that's there, you know, that kind of represents order.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting, you got to have some, somebody that can enforce that, right? And then we need to give them, under rule seventeen, we give the Sergeant of Arms the authority to remove anybody that is violating the rules, you know, something along those lines, that's what I'm talking about when we start drafting these rules.
So so for the the way ahead, um, I I think we're still going to figure out, so we need to have a work session, are we looking at a month out? For for the rule side of it, and then.
Yeah, because we got a lot of other stuff we got to get in between now and then, so yeah, I would say.
A month, two months, something like that?
Yeah.
Each individual member will take the rules, will put forth your rules and bring them to that work session.
And this, and then you can give us a sneak.
I'll give you a sneak.
Yeah, what I would recommend, the the way I would do it is, is go through that and say, I think this is a good one. This is a good one, that's a bad one, this is a good one, and then.
And then he needs this to collect his time in next meeting.
Yeah, and if you can go through here and you could find, if you want to find a couple in this booklet that that you think are key to implementing, you know, that's fine, there's a lot of it that's not applicable.
Right, and when you're in some sort of semifinals or if you want to help decluttering the language, right?
Yeah, and then help with the language, yeah. So like, like, rise to a point of order, right? So we don't do that, right? That's for big legislative bodies, right? There's, there's, there are things that I think are stuff we do. There's, there's third things that I think are stuff we do in here, right? How to fix time for a meeting, right? What's the rules that we will direct the clerk? You know, and then if we're, if we're late. Then if we, we have to have rules if you're late, because I know that's what happens, you get censured. You know, there's things, there's all sorts of rules that you got to be careful because that's, that's part of the rules of parliamentary procedure, right?
So you should have a 10-minute break between meetings.
Yeah, we can make that a rule. Every, every hour, we shall have at least, you know, a 10-minute break every hour. Make it a rule, right? Take temporary breaks for the public and the body to take a 10-minute break every hour, after every hour.
With their pleasure.
And then you can say, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I invoke rule number.
It's time.
Yeah, you know, I want to bring your attention to rule number 17, or whatever it is, right? So, yeah. What's the next calendar date? But there's nothing on it at the end of March.
Oh, that, we'll take a look.
Then we can throw this on there as another work session.
Uh, thank you.
It's pretty cool. Anybody?
Um, you want to do like a Monday, Mondays are?
No, it's Tuesday, it's Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Yeah.
Either the 20th, 25th, we have a regular board meeting and then a work session with the judicial system.
On the 25th?
On the 25th of March.
On the 27th, there's nothing, right?
Wide open. What is it?
On the 27th. Thursday.
It's wide open? All right, we can do it on the 27th.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crosby.
Uh, are you, uh, ready to explore putting that on the agenda to rescind the 1479?
What is that?
That's the one, the one that we looked at that I said was no good. We need to get rid of it.
Do you want to put those on the agenda to rescind now or wait till you have?
Well, right now, I guess legally, under Title 11, we're operating under these, right?
Yeah.
The ones that have adopted those resolutions.
Yeah.
Which don't say.
So we will have to, we will eventually have to rescind this as we approve. Can we just approve the rules as we, no, maybe you're right. Maybe we have to do them all and then rescind it once we have the rules compiled.
That would be orderly, but I don't see, if you've got your basic working structure and then you're going to add others as they occur, it would be okay.
So Mr. Crosby, how about this? How about we build our rulebook first and then we rescind these?
Uh, well, I don't see any reason not to rescind 1479 in its entirety.
Because.
You, where are you going with that?
Well, because then we won't have any rules under, under the titles.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I get you. We will eventually rescind them and replace them with our rules. And it will be supervisor, just like they have House rules, we can have supervisors' rules. And they will be the preeminent rules. And then we make our own little booklet like this. I used to have it in my desk.
And from now until the time when we adopt the rules, I, I don't believe there would be a situation that would occur because Mr. Crosby, or Supervisor Crosby concerned, right?
No, I, I think we're, we've been acting like adults for the last seven weeks. I think we can continue on to, right, right, Mr. Crosby? So, so.
So I, I don't.
What, what, what would be contentious is four years from now, one of us gets replaced and then somebody becomes a problem or whatever. But we haven't had that personality conflict, I don't think, yet.
Most particularly with the Office of County Administrator. That's where you're going to have it? That's where it's always been, et cetera, et cetera. Don't have one. That's my advice.
Okay, I, I got you. Well, you know what? I think we're going to.
Yeah, okay, so.
That, that becomes a legal issue too. So when we have that meeting, that, the.
This next meeting.
Yeah, because that's when, that's when we're going to have to have regarding the county administrator. Well, because you, having us directing, direct.
Right, there are legal implications.
There's significant legal implications to that. That's what I'm getting at. So we got to have that discussed as well. Because then you, you know, instead of having a vote of the board, you have a unilateral direction which violates Title 11, then you have open meeting law.
It's an abdication of your executive authority.
But the executive authority is the three of us.
Then why abdicate it to a county administrator?
Well, we're not, that's what I'm getting at.
If you have one, you're advocating.
To a county administrator.
Yeah, you are.
Because supervision, and that's where my model that I'm trying to get at comes in, right? Where you have the executive authority and then you have a chief of staff or AK county administrator that then implements and oversees the day-to-day enforcement of that.
What, what's the definition of day-to-day?
All right, so in that, I think, let's do that.
Yeah, and, and we'll have that discussion, you know, I get what you're, you're, you're saying. I'm just saying the model, there are numerous examples out there of that model, of those models, where you have, because quite frankly, I can't, and I don't think we all are going to spend every waking moment of our time supervising every single department in this county.
No.
I just, I just don't see that. That's my point.
No more policy on me.
Correct, correct, correct. Policy, direction, and oversight.
Right.
So that implementation would be the county administrator or chief of staff. I still like chief of staff. County administrator or chief of staff that oversees that direction. And then the other problem is if they want to come talk to us, right? Suppose someone wants to, then, you know, that creates problems. So having that chief of staff there, and I get Mr. Crosby's concern that that, that has morphed into a very powerful influential office. But this is a different board with very proactive, the three of us are clearly very more proactive, right? So no offense against Ms. Gilman, you know, she has so far, in my opinion, done nothing that warrants saying that she's power grabbing and going behind our backs and doing stuff, right? So that hasn't happened. Now, I understand, I understand the concern that Mr. Crosby, but there, I'm just worried about the downstream repercussions of getting rid of that position altogether.
And, and I can see that if it was the past, if history was here, I would maybe have concerns, you know?
I mean, I just saw what happened in Pima County, right? With, with Chuck Hinkle, he was like the king of Pima County, right? That's what I think Mr. Crosby's concern is, that you have an unelected individual wielding a lot of power. Um, and that, we have to, we have to find a mechanism so that doesn't happen. That's all.
And maybe that's in the description of the.
Right.
Right, good.
Right. All right, well, let's, uh, let's adjourn and then we'll agree to meet, uh, to start building the rules on the 27th.
Of March.
Of March. Adjourn.